We have one next week.
So this is a five Tuesday, not?
Yeah.
And you have six meetings.
Plus, well, the budget is not too big.
That's what he means, that that closes the day.
September is going to be.
I, uh. These workshops were supposed to make it, uh, shorter.
No, we do one night, one day, one night, one day. That's the way it was supposed to be structured.
I think it's morning, morning, night, night. Like, the workshop is the same time as the meeting.
Morning. I think there was a change.
There was a change when we first.
Yeah, no, but just.
Oh, I don't think we changed anything recently. Great, you know, I'd like to consult this from the council for a large work to end Monday Night Football games.
How about Baker Mayfield?
Well. He's the man.
He's as good as anybody in the league.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in the John Nett's Community Wing of City Hall. I'm officially calling this meeting to order. If everyone could please stand. Correction, could you please silence all devices first, then stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a short moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Allison, could you please call a roll?
Mayor Norris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Here.
Councilmember Gombaro.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
And Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, ma'am. We're going to begin today with the proclamations. The first proclamation is on the agenda. Proclamation on the agenda is Hispanic Heritage Month. So if you're here representing the Hispanic American Heritage Proclamation, please come forward. I know you guys. Come up here to the to the dais and face the audience. And after we read the proclamation, I'll present it, and you'll have time to speak. Come up here, face about, look that way, smile big. You ready, Chief? Go right ahead.
Whereas the City of Palm Coast is proud to recognize and celebrate the rich cultural heritage contributions and achievements of Hispanic and Latino Americans, who have enriched our community with their diverse traditions, customs, talents. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to honor the cultures, histories, and vital contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans to our nation, fostering a deeper understanding and appreciation of our shared heritage. And whereas the Hispanic American Cultural Society Incorporated, a nonprofit, community-focused organization, has played an integral role in uplifting Hispanic residents, with fewer resources in Florida for providing assistance, resources, and community connection. And whereas HACs hosts numerous community and fundraising events throughout the year to fund its mission and strengthen the bonds between people of all backgrounds, with the help of many dedicated sponsors and supporters who share its vision of bringing people together. And whereas the City of Palm Coast is committed to recognizing Hispanic and Latino culture and heritage as an important part of the city and its strong and diverse community. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida that September 15th, 2025 to October 15th, 2025, be officially designated as Hispanic Heritage Month. In the City of Palm Coast, we encourage all residents to join us in celebrating the diverse cultures, traditions, and contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans. We further commend the Hispanic American Cultural Society for its outstanding service, dedication, and impact in bringing people together and strengthening our community.
Thank you, sir. Come together and we'll take a quick picture, and then you'll have a have a moment at the left. Thank you, guys. The mic is yours if you have something to say.
Good morning. Very briefly, good morning to all, and thank you for having us here. It is with humble, uh, showings that we, uh, give our gratitude to the city council for this, uh, proclamation. We do stand here as the representatives of the Hispanic community in Flagler County. And we try our best during the whole year to present a favorable showing of our culture, heritage, and language. So we thank you once more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next one, the next proclamation we're going to be covering is Stormwater Awareness Week. Chief, if you would, please read the proclamation. Do we have anyone from the city? Come on up here, Ms. Lynn Stevens. Where you at? Bring the crew on up.
Yeah, get a good picture.
We are in force today. Then we're going to go clear some swales. All right, closing in center. Big boys are going to cover me up. No one's going to see. Beef on trails. Okay, Chief.
Yes, sir. Whereas untreated stormwater pollution is the number one source of natural liquid pollution in America, as it can pick up litter, sand, and chemicals and carry it out through our water systems. And whereas Palm Coast Stormwater System is designed to control this pollution, storing and moving the runoff through swales, drains, underroad pipes, canals, and waterways to protect residents and their properties from flooding while supporting healthy water sources. And whereas the Florida Department of Environmental Protection has worked to coordinate multiple workshops where experts educate stormwater and utility professionals about effective stormwater drainage systems. And whereas the City of Palm Coast has supported stormwater education by providing drainage maintenance training for field employees, organizing communication instruction for customer service representatives, offering residents informative experiences at community events such as the annual intercoastal cleanup, citizens academy classes, and informational displays at city celebrations. And whereas the goal of Palm Coast Stormwater Awareness Program is to ensure that all of us continue to maintain and value our city's well-managed stormwater system. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that the week of September 22nd through the 26th, 2025, be officially designated as Stormwater Awareness Week.
Thank you, sir. Closing in for a picture if we can get everyone. Panoramic this time.
All right, we're going to try our best here. Ready?
The mic is yours, Ms. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We appreciate this proclamation. Couple of facts that I just wanted to bring to the public's attention. The fact that the Stormwater Department actually became its own department in 2019. So considering that timeframe, we've made some significant strides in the improvement of our system. Couple other items. We have over 1,200 miles of swales in our system. We have 177 miles of ditches that we maintain, as well as 58 miles of freshwater canals, and over 3,300 pipe locations throughout the city that this staff maintains. Again, it takes a small army to maintain this stormwater system that we have today. And I'm very proud to celebrate the men and women that keep the system operating. Their tireless commitment, pride, and professionalism speaks volumes. This year, we have broken records in the miles of swales that we've maintained. We've also maintained ditches that have never been maintained in the past. We have, um, broken records in the linear feat of pipe replacement throughout our city. We've also completed some major capital projects such as the London Waterway and began construction on some other major capital projects throughout our system. We also added a second culvert crew this year. We also added a new crew for the freshwater canals for maintenance. And we added a new hybrid crew to help with both swales and ditches. So we have done a tremendous amount of work this year, and I'm very proud of the men and women. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, the next proclamation is proclaiming October 2025 as, uh, as Raise the Pink Flag with the Pink Army Month in support of breast cancer awareness. Chief, go right ahead.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Whereas breast cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in women, with over 297,790 new cases of invasive cancer are expected in women in the U.S., along with 55,750 new cases of non-invasive breast cancer, and about 2,800 new cases of invasive breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in men this year. And whereas only one in eight women diagnosed with breast cancer have a family history, and 85% have no family history, with an increase in incident rates since 1990 being predominantly in women 50 years or older. And whereas early detection with timely screening mammograms has helped to boost the breast cancer survivor rate to more than 2.6 million in the United States, also resulting in a 40% decline in mortality since 1989, with women under 50 seeing an even larger decrease due to early screening and detection. And whereas doctors say with Florida Cancer Specialist and Research Institute has been a dedicated, compassionate, and decorated soldier of Advent Health's Pink Army, as she's tirelessly treated and cared for thousands of breast cancer patients in the City of Palm Coast for 17 years with innovative therapies such as immunotherapy and access to groundbreaking clinical trials. And whereas Advent Health Palm Coast Pink Army, with the support of the City of Palm Coast and our community, has distributed over 150,000, helped hundreds of patients, and performed over 1,000 procedures in direct support to Flagler County men and women dealing with breast cancer. And whereas the City of Palm Coast is joining Advent Health in the Pink on Parade on October 5th for a 5K run and a one-mile pet-friendly fun walk. Fundraising efforts stay local and include early detection screenings, wellness and lifestyle resources, and survivorship education programs to support qualified patients that are impacted by breast cancer. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that October 25, 2025 be officially designated as Raise the Pink Flag with the Pink Army Month in support of breast cancer awareness, and encourage all women to pursue early breast cancer screening and other possible diagnostic services to avoid becoming one of this nation's mortalities.
Thank you, sir. Close it in. The mic, the mic is yours. Yes, sir, that's that's perfectly fine.
Good morning. Thank you for that proclamation. Uh, my name is Tony Papandrea. I am the chairman of Advent Health Palm Coast Foundation. And, uh, you know, we go back a long way with the with our relationship with the City of Palm Coast. Uh, I go back and remember the days of Canfield and the days of Nett's and the days of Holsey. They would be proud. They would. And here we are once again. We're going to turn our community pink. And we do that to support the many, many people that show up at our doors and say, I've got breast cancer. And those people are the ones we take care of and we treat. The numbers are overwhelming. Over the past years, we've done over 600 people, over 1,000 procedures. And while the numbers might be impressive, remember each one of those numbers represent a person going through what probably is the darkest part of their lives. But we'll be there for them. We'll be there with them until a cure is found. And that's what we do. So I would like to introduce first, where's Wally? Wally is, there he is, he's hiding over there. Uh, he here for support, CEO of Parkway Hospital. Thanks, Wally, for coming. Sean Rotan is the director of our new Freitag Cancer Center. Sean?
Thank you, Tony. Mr. Mayor, City Council. Uh, Advent Health is dedicated to providing advanced cancer care right here close to home. With our comprehensive cancer program, there is no need to travel outside of the City of Palm Coast to receive expert care. We offer advanced surgical services with the latest robotic technology, expanded medical oncology, and comprehensive radiation oncology powered by state-of-the-art linear accelerators with precision image guidance. Caring for the whole person is what drives us. Our cancer care program also offers oncology navigators, social workers, and chaplains alongside our physicians and staff to strengthen the patient's body, mind, and spirit. Early detection and awareness is crucial in our fight against breast cancer. Thank you for your leadership in raising the pink flag.
Thank you, Sean. Next, representing Advent Health Palm Coast, Tammy Cornelius.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Tammy Cornelius. I'm the executive director of nursing. I want to thank you from my heart for the support of the City of Palm Coast that we have for the Pink Army. The ability to raise funds and take care of our community in our community is something that makes Flagler County very special and the City of Palm Coast even more special. We really appreciate the ability to to care for our patients that qualify for free mammograms and for also for follow-up care and to keep our community cared for in their homes and with their families. So thank you very much for your support.
Lastly, but not least, uh, one of the one of the great things about our Pink 5K is the acceptance by the community. And we're talking about individuals, businesses, corporations, large, small. And you can see on the back of our shirts the number of people that have supported us. So I would like to bring up Danielle and Elise from the community to tell you what they think about what we're doing. I got it right today.
Hello, I'm Danielle De Souza and Elise Panett. And we are honored to be here to support a cause that is close to so many of our hearts. Um, we have had the privilege for several years now of partnering partnering with Advent Health for the Pink Army 5K. And it is an incredible event that raises funds and awareness for cancer, as we heard, right here in Flagler County. And it's not just a one-time thing. Every single year, this event grows bigger and bigger and bringing more people, more support, and more hope. We'd love for you and everybody here to join us on October 5th, and of course, bring the pets. Um, we are dress up your furry friend for our Pink Out Your Pet contest, where we'll have prizes for first, second, and third place. So the goal is to make this event, um, big, pink, best one yet. And register today, join the fun, and help us fight cancer together in our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Danielle. Be blessed.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, go go right ahead.
I just wanted to say that, uh, you know, I've been here in the city a long time now, and it is amazing the improvements that have been made with our hospital on the Parkway and the new cancer center out at the older hospital. This is always a really significant day for me. My grandmother, mother, two sisters, and my wife have all passed away from from cancer. And so it's always touching for me when we have this ceremony, but but I look on the bright side is all that is being done in the facilities that we now have in the city. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you, sir. Thank everyone for coming out for the proclamations. We're going to move on to item E. I'm sorry, did anyone on the council have anything else to say?
Um, just really quickly, I just want to, I think we had some really important proclamations today for Pink on Parade. What an awesome event. Um, the community just gets so engaged with that, and so I'm so grateful for them and for everybody who participates in that event. It's such a great, um, event to bring visibility to a issue that affects so many of us. Councilman Sullivan, I didn't realize that, so thank you for sharing that with us. Um, thank you to those who came out for, um, you know, the Hispanic Heritage Month. I mean, I just think it's so great that you all are so active in our community and that you provide such enrichment to us. So thank you so much for being here. And to our stormwater guys, I can't say enough. I mean, you guys are just, and gals, I'm sorry. Everybody is so wonderful. And Lynn, you do a wonderful job. You have made such improvements. I'm so glad that you brought up the fact that 2019 is when this department was created. I mean, you're talking about a six-year time span to really, really just move mountains. Um, you guys worked tirelessly under some really tough conditions. I appreciate you. I know our residents appreciate you, so thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman.
No, I just want to echo the comments by both Councilman Sullivan and Vice Mayor Pontieri. But specifically to Mr. Ramon Marrero, you know, thank you for your leadership in in our community. And thank you as a representative of the Hispanic community stepping up and volunteering to serve on our charter review committee. It's much appreciated. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. With that, we're going to move on to item E, public participation. Please remember the rules, uh, that are printed in the agenda. If the item is is an agenda item, please refrain until that item comes before the council. And with that, we'll open up for public comment. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Chanta Prelinger. I'd like to know if there's an update on SB 180, which was a possible lawsuit against the Florida legislature. Because there was a, that piece of legislation signed by Governor DeSantis would give, um, a ban to local moratorium and construction, which was meant to address post-reconstruction in affected zone, but it was returned in a way that it would affect all the counties and municipalities. So, um, even though there would have been a cost of $20,000 for the city to join the other municipalities or counties to fight that, I want to know if there's any update, if the city has taken any decision regarding that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Jeanie Duarte, the charter is not due for review till 2028. With three outgoing city council seats, a moderator who appears to be overriding the committee, and a rogue charter review member who is actively suppressing citizen voices along with others, are using intimidation, fear tactics, threatening consequences against residents who speak up. This poses great concerns and undermines public trust. In the wake of the Charlie Kirk assassination, due to these compound suppressions of public input, I urge this, uh, that the Charter Review Committee be suspended till 2028 as outlined in the charter. The recent FC3 Sunshine violation should not be overlooked. The city budget, fleet, and department raises are out of control. While residents face high taxes and fees, we need budget discipline across all departments. Existing infrastructure has been neglected far too long. The and is excessive and not adding up. The intermingling, uh, budget of water, wastewater through, though, I'm sorry about that. Though they already expanded wastewater treatment plant two as a new pilot program without public input, raising concerns that transparency and of transparency and accountability posing unris- unknown risk from reclaimed water, chemical use, and potential contaminations. Please explain why wastewater treatment plant two was expanded without public input. Being an enterprise is not an excuse for changing our water source. Why do residents east of the inlet not pay stormwater fees while those on the west side do? We do need more swell crews. 30 years to complete a cycle is not acceptable, and some residents are confused as to which direction their swells should drain. There are multiple meter issues. Residents are being charged $12 a month for irrigation meters not in use. Airport expansions, the data center, and 5G cell towers are near homes, schools, and fire stations, raising health and safety and property value concerns. And the 30 mile an hour speed limits in signs in the neighborhoods actually encourage faster speeds. Maybe consider removing these signs altogether, especially those next to speed bumps. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Jeff Adams. Uh, wanted to address the, um, ongoing concerns with SRM. I don't know. I have some concerns as it, I went back to the site and looked, and there is an inordinate amount of empty land there that I don't think the traffic patterns are going to be that important. And as far as writing some kind of, uh, And as far as writing some kind of ongoing legislation or whatever ordinance that keeps SRM from expanding, I think that's, I don't think that's a realistic, because none of us know what's going to come up in the next five years as far as development. So, I would encourage you to look to have more heavy industry allowed. I don't think there's precedents are set. Every time I've gone for a, any kind of change in zoning or rules like that in my career, each one was freestanding. I am especially concerned as we go into the Governor DeSantis' wanting to change to where we're going to have forgiveness of property tax for homesteaded properties. We're going to have to replace that income with something. And if we keep pushing these businesses away, we're not going to have any money to support them. And the more people coming in, the more problems we're going to have. So, I think we need to take a look at how to bring in income. We don't want to become a bedroom community to Daytona Beach and St. Augustine. We have to have something that can support the population as it moves into here. You've got, was it David Pulte? He's in charge of Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. He's going to turn it loose. You've got Warren Buffett, who's getting ready to invest in KB Homes and Dr. Horton. I mean, these people are going to unleash on us. We're not going to have the infrastructure, I mean, the income to cover these. I just am cautioning that we need to look now at replacing this income as opposed to waiting till the wolves are at the door. I mean, that's, I just watch it every day, and I keep seeing the changes that are coming. And I don't think we're prepared to move forward with replacement of that income. Can't depend on small businesses. They have like a 60% chance of surviving after the original founder leaves. So, I just don't think that's a realistic replacement. We've got all the swap shops and those kinds of businesses here. I encourage them to move, but I don't think that's where we need to lay up all of our future. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Carr.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I've lived on Florida Park Drive for over 25 years, and it seems like the sewer system is beginning to fill over there. And what I'm talking about is recently, two neighbors had peptanks put in their yards and to prevent backup going into their homes during certain parts when the pump systems are not working or they're working too hard. I'm not really sure about what causes the backup to go into the homes from the failing sewer system, okay? It seems like adding peptanks is a patch. Why not fix the sewer system? Why put a patch in there? I mean, I did some research on the septic tanks, on the peptanks, and there seems like there's over 17,000 of them in Palm Coast that are patching the sewer system, patched into the sewer system. I'm just sort of wondering about it. Also, the wastewater plants are, we were told that, you know, some of the stormwater is seeking into the sewer plant pipes and therefore overburden the wastewater plants. Well, if you don't fix the sewer system, it's going to continue. You're going to just keep building more wastewater plants? I don't know. I don't know what the answer to that is. I did a little research, so I said, well, can peptanks cause the sewer system to fail? It says, yes, a large number of peptanks can contribute to the failure of municipal sewer system, especially in Florida, challenging environmental conditions. The specific threat comes from the potential power outage, just system failures, and physical limitations of the municipal sewer system. High groundwater and poor soil causes the stormwater to seek into the sewer system. Then it says weather elements. Well, we got the weather elements. Could be hurricane. And then regulatory focus on water quality. Florida Department of Environmental Protection is focused on reducing nutrients pollution in the septic tanks that contribute to harmful algae blooms. This is driving some communities to transitioning away from septic systems toward a central sewer system. But peptank systems are still present. Rapid growth and flooding, rapid go flooding in sewer. I just got a question. What is the limitation of our sewer system with how many peptanks can it handle? I don't have that answer. I'm just asking it because I'm seeing it coming about.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Carr. Let me ask you a quick question. Those repairs that they recently did out there, did it help, like at Pablo's house? Did it help at all?
Repairs did not help. The peptanks are what's helping.
So, did Pablo get a peptank?
Pablo's got a peptank. Manly across the street has a peptank. I need a peptank.
Yes, sir. All right. Can you speak with, yeah, Carl and Brian in the back, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Just going to ask, is this part of the street a gravity-fed area right now? And it's being transitioned to peptanks or?
Well, I don't know the, I don't know all the circumstances behind it, but they were out there just doing repairs because Pablo's had problems since he's been in that house. His water oscillates in his toilets because the flow. They've done all kinds of repairs out there. But speak to Brian, Mr. Carr, and let's see if we can.
I've been there 25 years, and all of a sudden, it's, wow, it's a big problem.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure. Kind of the background of that street because they're, and to answer the question, Mr. Carr, there's, so, the design and use of Peps is, was kind of a developer decision by ITT back in the 60s and 70s, which is typically a cheaper way to do things. But to the point of why they're used, usually in lower-lying areas, you use the peptanks because they have the electronic pump that then pumps everything out where in other areas, you would be able to have a gravity feed to where it's going downhill, essentially. In some areas of Palm Coast, because we're so low-lying, we're not able to do that. So, the pump gets it down the street to the lift station so that it can get out. So, that's why they exist, and that was, you know, a design 50 years ago. So, there's certain areas of Palm Coast that are designated for Peps and certain areas that are not. Any of the new MPDs and things like that, they're all self-contained, and they're not using Peps or any of those. They're using traditional gravity-fed and other systems that are not using Peps.
And we'll follow up, Mr. Carr, with Brian and figure out what's going on. Yes, sir, Mr. Webb.
Mark Webb, Palm Coast. Couple of things. I came to the DIAS earlier and was asking about the recommendation of transparency for our charter board meetings. Requested that the city participate in capturing those visually, using our capability. I was told no due to the cost. I spoke to a few of the board members. They feel that the criticality and the importance of what they're doing and the transparency needed by the city. To add that, like next Monday, they're having an added-on meeting. And so, I did some research and found that it's well within my right to bring in a videographer on my own without interfering with the meeting and record such meeting. Some of you may know I have a local podcast, so I have access to a videographer. And it's that important that we come in and capture that, those conversations and actually see how that's happening because ultimately, the citizens of the city are going to make the final decision on those changes. Secondly, I would like to address the lawsuit, not specifically, but some information that was shared on the David Ayer Show last Friday, and it would go to Mr. Sullivan. He had multiple developers on the show that all actually admitted that they knew full well that SB 180 was going to pass months into this process. And they were amazed that the city of Palm Coast, this was their words, did not have the visibility or understanding that in all the efforts that you guys were doing, raising the impact fees, were going to be for naught because SB 180 was going to pass, which was going to negate everything you did. Now, that is what they were saying. You're welcome to go and pull up the Free For All Friday. But I found it so interesting that we, I think rightfully, were trying to find as many places as possible to generate funds to help the city. And yet, you have developer organizations that knew full well up in Tallahassee that SB 180, with all of its addendums added to it, was going to pass, which was going to keep us from being successful, which may explain why the developers sat here day after day after day and never really said anything to push back because they knew it was for naught anyway. Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the DIAS. Any follow-ups? Chief, I know you're kind of in a tight spot there, but you got any follow-ups to anything residents have to say?
Yes, sir. Just a couple. I thought Councilman Miller did a pretty good job of discussing why we've got some peptanks in our system. And so, to address Ms. Chantel with the SB 180 lawsuit update, I'm not going to speak on that side of it for the city attorney may, but we have engaged, joined with the county on our legislative agenda related to that particular situation. Not related to SRM, but there is another concrete plant situation coming through PLDRB. Our community development director, Mr. Zobler, informed us that they've asked for a one-month extension, so there's a little bit more going forward there. And we'll definitely get with Mr. Carr related to his specific concern for his specific area. And I don't think there's any other comments from me.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any council members, you got something? Councilman Miller?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just to address the SB 180 and the timing and, you know, pre-knowledge, you know, maybe they did know that they were lobbying for those changes to happen. We certainly didn't because, as you mentioned, there was a amendment added to that bill at 10:00 PM the night before the vote that fundamentally changed kind of how that bill could be interpreted. So, you know, the intent of that originally is just to prevent people from not being able to rebuild homes during a disaster. And those changes then ultimately made it to where you can't prevent any building at all. And so, you know, there wasn't anything to lobby against until 10:00 PM that night, in which, for the most part, you know, probably a few lobbyists saw the changes and knew what impact it would have at the time. But by the morning, you know, there was nothing to be done in order to stop that, I don't think, from our perspective. So, all we can do is continue to fight it. I think from a broader perspective, it's very unlikely that SB 180 remains in its current form through the rest of the year. There's going to be legal challenges that take it to the state Supreme Court likely. There's already, the sponsor of the bill has already said, I'm going to sponsor a change to this bill because that wasn't my intent. So, I don't think it's going to last. That's a lay opinion, though. So, you know, hopefully, those changes come to fruition here either in the fall, but certainly by this time next year, when the governor signs all the bills, there would be a substantial change to that. That doesn't limit us in those ways.
Thank you, sir. Last, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, just on two subjects. One, Ms. Duarte, I have not heard of anything coming out of our charter review committee where there's been any type of intimidation or effort to censure. I would ask that if that is occurring, you please provide more specifics because if that is occurring, we obviously need to put a stop to that. I just haven't heard of anything. This is the first that I've heard of anything like that. So, let's make it a record so that we can address it properly. As to SB 180 and any comments made on Free For All Friday, I won't speak to the legal validity, I think, of any lawsuit based on SB 180. What I will say is that comments like that, I think, are short-sighted for our community, and we need to be looking long-term, what is best for our community, and that's exactly what this council did. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just one comment on the SB 180. The comment that it was pointless for us to do the impact fee changes that we've done, I'd just like to ask our lawyer. I didn't think that SB 180 affected the impact, but maybe they do. I just, since that was brought up. As far as I know, what we've done is done.
Yeah, I would say what we've done is legally sound, and I'll leave it at that for right now.
Thank you, sir. Anything else from the council? Yes, Mr. Carr, we'll, did he dip out? He's gone. But Brian, please, please.
He's with Brian.
Oh, he's with Brian?
Yeah.
Just remind, let's try to fix that because I know Pablo's had problems forever over on that street. We'll move on to item F, the minutes. We need to approve the minutes from the September 2nd, 2025 business meeting, the September 9th workshop, and the September 10th budget meeting. Anyone have any amendments or anything to the minutes for those three meetings? No. Did we get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve September 2nd, September 9th, and September 10 minutes.
Second. Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. We're going to move on to item G, ordinance of the first read. Do we have a presentation for this? Oh, there we go. Great. Marcus, if you could, this ordinance is amending chapter 42, creating section 42.7 of the Code of Ordinances providing for the use and operation of bicycles and electric-powered cycles. Andy, I got your email, but I didn't, I didn't see it until I was on the way in. So, if, when we open it up for public comments, you can give your thoughts and ideas on that.
City Attorney Marcus Duffy, what I plan to do today, it's not really more of a presentation, it's more of a just go over the red line changes that I made based on this council's direction at the last meeting. So, what I have before you is the red line version. Also, in your packet is a clean version as well. I will tell you, reviewing it last night and yesterday, there was a couple little things that I found that I will bring up to you as I go through this ordinance with you, okay? So, the first main change that I'll come up to you is, it's in section one, where it's under legislative and administrative findings. The main change in there is that, let me pull it up on my computer so I can pull it along, is going to be that when reviewing it yesterday, it said sidewalks and certain incorporated areas of the county. I have changed this section to now say of the city of Palm Coast because that's our jurisdiction. Our jurisdiction is not the county. No questions, I'll keep moving forward. The next red line version, so, is in section eight. We changed this to be called electric off-road powered cycles. And the main idea behind this is because of the statute, it talks about these type of powered cycles, it's off-road. They're not, they don't have an ability to be on the road. So, you'll see that these vehicles are best understood as off-highway motorcycles, also known as dirt bikes, but doesn't have to be a dirt bike, as defined in the statute there. And they are powered by an electric engine, which was not designed for or are not authorized to operate on the roadways. So, the main idea behind changing that section is saying, these are bikes that are not meant to be on the road, be on the sidewalks. There's no classification for them to be used out in the public. Moving along here. Section B, 1A, bicycles may be operated on bicycle lanes, bicycle paths, roadways, and sidewalks consistent with this ordinance. And then I added, I took out further and added in, when operating on roadways, bicycles operators shall comply with all traffic regulations. operators shall comply with all traffic regulations. Going back, I did have, let's see, nope, I already talked about that. Making sure I'm following along, okay. Next section is under electric bike or e-bike. We changed that, we added this sentence here, where it says, "E-bikes may be operated on bicycles, lanes, bicycle paths, roadways, and sidewalks consistent with this ordinance," and then added when at the beginning of the next sentence. In paragraph B, we added, "It is unlawful to operate an e-bike in a bicycle lane, bicycle path, right-of-way, roadways, and sidewalks in an unsafe and reckless manner to include but not limited to excessive speed. The operation of e-bike that produces more than 750 watts of power is prohibited." So the main idea behind this was, our discussion last time was about how would we enforce any type of max speed limit? And going back and discussing that at the sheriff's office, we have a couple of notice requirements, you know, to enforce some type of max speed limits, we'd have to have a sign out there. We would have to have, where the person that is operating the bike, they have due notice to follow the law or the ordinance. So here, we added this paragraph to kind of take out the speed limit requirement and kind of, they need to be operating it not in an unsafe and reckless manner and to not limit it to excessive speed. Now, going back to my prosecution days, when I would do a lot of traffic citations and prosecute those, to do reckless, to prosecute someone for reckless driving, I would have plenty of examples of someone driving a vehicle in a reckless manner, right? We don't have that for bikes. We don't have those examples because it's very new. So that's where it's gonna be left up to the sheriff's officer who decides to take someone aside and give them a ticket. We're leaving that up to their discretion based on their experience. Any questions on this before I move on?
No, I think that was pretty significant, though, the speed limit, when we talked a lot about it. And so I think, I think that's probably correct.
Yeah, I'll just reserve because actually Mr. Dance's email that you referenced, Mayor, specifically speaks to how we're defining reckless. And I haven't been a prosecutor, so you could probably speak on this better than I, but to say we're just going to not define it in any way and leave it up to an officer's discretion, which I support an officer's discretion, but I also support the public being notified as to what qualifies as reckless. And I think that that's necessary if we're not going to get some void for vagueness challenges to this. So I'll speak more to the substance of what perhaps we can talk about adding once we start to go through Mr. Dance's email. But just kind of, if we could just flag this for discussion.
Yeah, not a problem. Let's see.
Also, just to add, in terms of the speed limit in general, I received a lot of feedback from residents on this because we're specifically, we were specifically defining a speed, right, for e-bikes. However, regular bikes could go at a speed higher than that as well. Some of that's top speed, right? People aren't zooming around at 27 miles an hour on their bike for very long, most likely, but they can still exceed 10 miles an hour. So the question is, why is it reckless for e-bike but not for a bicycle? So potentially having some conformity between the two would make sense so that the capabilities that the e-bike possesses are addressed specifically or, you know, something to the effect of reckless driving for both and not just for one.
Understood. All right. The next paragraph is removal of pedals from e-bike and/or modification to the proposition, propulsion system, sorry, couldn't get that out there. Either physically or via software prohibits the use of an e-bike within the jurisdiction. So what we're saying there is if you remove your bike pedals from the e-bike, or if you modify it beyond the three classifications, that therefore says that you can't use that bike within the jurisdiction of Palm Coast.
And I have a question about this, too, because I also received some emails from people saying, "Hey, I have an e-bike, but it doesn't have pedals." And so based on the Florida definition, that is not an e-bike, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanna make sure that I understand that completely.
Yeah. Let's see here. Moving down, the paragraph language is now, I believe it's the new paragraph right here, we took out, that's where we took about, took out the 10 miles per hour speed limit. The next paragraph, which is now paragraph F, we changed it from 15 to 13 based on this council's past direction. And then you'll see here, we changed it to electric off-road power cycles. And the idea, like I talked about, the ideas behind that is, off-road is it's not being driven on the road, it's not being driven anywhere on our sidewalks, bike trails, out in the public. If someone wants to do whatever they want with their bike in their private backyard, that's a different story, but this is just mainly on the public. So I took out paragraph A and then kind of kept all this the same. Going through, there was one more change that I made. Let me see if I can find that real quick for you guys. Changed it last night, 11:00 hour when I was noticing it. Paragraph 8. So in paragraph 8, it is right here, this paragraph, it currently reads, "This vehicle has no pedals and is powered." I changed the "and" to an "or," so it meets the requirement that, hey, if this vehicle does not have pedals or is operating at the, above the speed of 28 miles per hour, then it does not meet the definition of an e-bike under our jurisdiction. Stand by for questions, comments, direction.
Anyone have any follow-ups? Councilman Gambero, you got anything?
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, I just, and maybe, you know, we, it is good to bring this up prior to public comment because I gotta say, counsel, I'm still struggling with putting an age limit on this. So, you know, I believe in parental rights, I believe in being safe, but I don't know that we should be telling parents what types of bicycles their kids can and cannot have. I think we've heard a lot of public comment that people owning regular bicycles and operating regular bicycles operate them unsafely sometimes as well. So to be telling a parent that they cannot allow their child under the age of 13 to have an e-bike, I think is overstepping. I mean, we've instituted a lot of safety rules through this ordinance, and I think that we're perfectly within our right to do so, and I think it's our duty to do so. But to tell parents that if you have a child under the age of 13 that you, they cannot have an e-bike, I just wanna make my position very clear, I do not support that. I think that we're trying to work out a really good ordinance here. I don't know if maybe we say, if you're between a certain age, you have to engage in some type of class. You know, I haven't really, because I don't know what the availability of that is in our community, but wanted to get your thoughts. And then I would like to hear public comment, and this is a first read, so we have a second read. If the public is out there, and we've gotten a lot of feedback on this, I would like some feedback from the community. What do you all think? I just think we're overstepping.
Go right ahead.
Maybe to avoid some comments along these lines, there've been a number of emails and calls and all that. We're not talking about electric-powered two-wheel scooters here, so it's not included in this ordinance, and so we shouldn't be talking about, well, you gotta put, no, we can't, we can't cover everything, and this is an attempt to get out one part of the problem of electric-powered vehicles of transportation that we're faced with. So just to avoid that in case somebody wanted to talk about that, we're not, this is not gonna cover that.
Thank you, sir. You had something, Councilman Miller?
Yes, sir, thank you. Yeah, so in terms of the age, I'm inclined to, I feel like I'm going that same direction. If our intent is to make things safer, age necessarily, is not necessarily the thing that's causing an unsafe situation, right? If they're not driving recklessly, if they're obeying the laws, but they're 12, then they're being safe. And so I agree that potentially that's something that we could change, have some other requirements for people under that age. I'm not sure, again, like you said, what the final solution could be. But I don't necessarily think that, say, a 12-year-old is just by nature unsafe compared to a 13-year-old.
Might save some parents some money for Christmas gifts if it's restricted to 13. We could remove that. Go back to that line, Marcus, please.
And so it's right here, and just a friendly reminder, this is restricting it in the use of the public. If someone's using it on their private property, that's a different story. The age, that'd be up to them and their parents.
Yeah, most kids, if they're younger, if they're small, smaller, younger children, they're gonna be riding their bikes in the street in front of their houses. Yes, sir.
On that one, before, I think all those are good points. I think what probably is required is almost a special section or a special paragraph for children under the age of 13, the following other requirements, or we add some instruction or something.
Something about like parental supervision?
Right, that kind of thing. So we wouldn't say they can't have them, but we would add some.
Under the supervision of an adult.
I guess, well, to go, just to be a devil's advocate, because that's my job, I don't know how you enforce that if someone, you know, because we're talking about use out in the public, 11-year-old is by themselves, or if there's, that's, that's pretty much saying that if they're riding their bike and they're under the age of 12, they always have to have someone that's at least 18 years of older to be around them.
Maybe if we're trying to find a happy median, and again, I don't know exactly where I lie on adjusting this, that's, you know, I'm really looking for some public input on this, but perhaps there's something that says if they're traveling on a road that has a speed limit of over 35, they have to be accompanied by an adult if they're under a certain age. Because I do understand the concept of wanting to keep our kids that are not yet teenagers safe on these machines that go, you know, can go up to 28 miles per hour. I get that, and I can appreciate that. I just wanna make sure we're not overstepping. So I don't know, maybe we can all think about what that would look like, you know, saying that if they are traveling, if they're under the age of 13, traveling on a road with a speed limit of 35 miles per hour or higher, they have to be accompanied by an adult. I think maybe that's a happy median, but I look to, I look to you all for, you know, to maybe kind of help massage. My point is, though, as it stands, I don't support this.
The same as the next paragraph as far as operating an e-bike. How many, how many kids 13-year-old have a picture that E?
Well, actually Commissioner Dance had a good suggestion in his feedback. He said if they have their school IDs, and I don't, I really don't know if 10-year-olds have school IDs. I don't have a 10-year-old yet, so I'm not really sure about that. So that, that feedback might be helpful, but he did suggest that I think that's a perfectly reasonable suggestion.
Yeah, and wouldn't that, I mean, wouldn't that fall under a government-issued photo ID?
We can make it an exception. I guess what I was talking about with Mr. Dance is, my only hesitation with a school ID, I don't believe it has an age. So that would be the total point of having the ID, is to have an age. I'll be honest with you, if you guys don't want a requirement in age, and don't want to require an ID, we can scrap those two things. That was based on the direction of the council to add that in there.
We may have to scratch it.
I don't know. I think just for safety reasons, if they have, even if it doesn't have their age, if they're, if they have an ID that, I mean, God forbid, if one of these kids get into an accident, you wanna know who they are and who to call. So I just, I think that still having an ID on them is smart, but I would say that a school ID is perfectly reasonable.
Yeah, we can add that under, like, ID requirements, school ID meets the requirements. That's easy fix.
Just to push it, though, do we think a six-year-old should be operating?
Well, as a parent, I think it's within the parent's decision.
I think, I think there's, there's a point, okay, how about a five-year-old?
Well, Councilman, we can go down this road all day long, but.
I know, but that's the problem, Counsel. The point you're making is almost an impossible point to then read out into a regulation that would make sense because you always have points like I'm making. And so I think having a general idea of the speed limit makes some sense that way because there is a number, I think there is a number where you'd say, no. A child at seven years old or six years old should not be operating an e-bike.
And I think it's up to the parent to make that decision.
Uh, maybe. Maybe they can. Like, should all parents homeschool their kids? No, but they should be allowed to if they, if they can.
I take the same position on what books kids should read.
But that's, you get into, my problem is you get into it, and it's very hard to put in words, and I know as a lawyer, you have to do this.
I get it.
But, but, but I do think there are limits to where we could get ourselves in trouble by not having some kind of a limitation in there.
Well, I don't know because that's how it exists today, right? There is no limitation, so.
Well, and that's why we're doing the ordinance.
But again, fundamentally, the age isn't necessarily the problem. The problem is the safety, right? So if you're behaving safe, then no problem.
I get your point, Counsel. I think the point you're making, Councilman, is that at a certain age, you have the ability to understand what safe operation is, if I understand what your argument is.
And then physical strength also.
Well, but to that point, do you, do you think a six-year-old or a seven-year-old would be cruising down the road at 30 on their e-bike? I don't know. I don't know.
They might.
And if they are, I mean, I wouldn't let my kid do it, you know, but, but, but that's a personal decision, so I'd make him go out there and work on some manual pedals.
I just wonder how we, how we, this is a regulation, basically. So part of it is safety and concerns and all that. So I just think it's very hard in the area we're talking about right now to do the right, to say the right thing.
Can I, can I add in real quick, Mr. Mayor? So just, if we're, it seems like this is a topic that you guys are still wanting to discuss more. Maybe, what would be the point of having an age requirement? When you have these age requirements, you're saying, who is competent to ride this bike out in public, right? Without parental thing. So me just doing a quick search, the average age starting in middle school, it starts at 11 years old, okay? So giving that as an example, that might, if you're not sure what age, 11 might be a good example, or higher, but I'm showing, where would someone be competent? We have 16 years of age to drive a car, 18 is to vote. So where would you guys think a competent person be able to ride this bike out on the road without any parental guidance? It's kind of, I think, what you look for in age requirement. And I only say middle school because that's when kids start riding bikes to school, so 11 is when someone starts.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just, I just wanted to comment on the ID piece and what Commissioner Dance had recommended. You know, the, the IDs are certainly issued by the school, but I think, you know, I think we all agreed at the last meeting that, when we discussed this, that the, that education and training was an important piece of all of this, right? So let's say there is a school ID, do, should they also carry kind of a certificate of training that's been completed, which has their age on it? That way it can be identified, to Mr. Duffy's point. But at the end of the day, you know, if a five-year-old can't pass an educational course, should they be authorized to ride a bike on the, on the roads? If the educational course for the bike says that you have to be able to master, you know, being able to ride and turn, do basic things, and show, and have the competency to be able to pass the laws, you know, the rules of the road, you know, if they can't pass that. So, you know, can they pass a physical test and a competency test that's approved and then issued along with, you know, the, whatever identification goes along with it that identifies their age? I think might be something worth discussing because I think, while I understand freedom of choice is always where I think all of us want to go, you know, competency and the ability to effectively ride on the roads to protect themselves and others is also important.
Are we able to get data from the sheriff's office on the average age of those that are getting in accidents on these e-bikes because they're not seven-year-olds? Thank you, Commander, I would appreciate that. I think that will help shape this discussion a little bit more. Look, I mean, if, if, if the concern is truly safety, which I think it is, it's my position that there should be something that says, under a certain age, they cannot travel on certain roads without adult supervision, that allows them to be on our bike paths, that allows them to be in their neighborhoods. And my, I guess, you know, kind of a larger concern, if we're looking larger scale at this, we have heard a lot of comment, to your point, Councilman Sullivan, about regulating scooters and things like that. I mean, seven and eight-year-olds ride scooters around my neighborhood right now. So are we going to then impose age limits on kids with scooters? I mean, where do you stop it? And so that's really my larger concern, is this is a larger discussion from a policy perspective as to where you step over in the name of safety and tell parents how to parent. So that's my concern here. how to parent. So that's my concern here.
We'll hang on to that one, try to determine that age. If we can get, if we can get some feedback on, from the Sheriff's Department, that'd be great. But like Vice Mayor said, this is our first read, and we're going to have some public input. Anything else on there, Marcus, we need to discuss?
No, sir.
Anything else from the council? Okay, we're going to open this up for public comment. And, yes, come on up, Ms. Chantel.
Chantal Praniga, I hope three minutes will be enough. I have some thought about that. First of all, the size of an electric bike does not accommodate a five-year-old. So there's already a limit in what the bike is like. And how can we legislate freedom and developmental of the children? Because unless you let them take some risk, they never learn to be responsible. But then, when they are on the, let's say, on pedestrian paths, and they have that electric bike, okay, so if you have an adult with them because they are on the street, they're going to cross at some point to continue on the path, so they will be on the street. So because they are on the pedestrian paths, you would say, okay, they don't need an adult, but they still are going to cross. And this is usually where the accidents happen, when they cross the street. What else? Reckless usage. I find a lot of reckless usage due to peer pressure. And I've seen recently two kids on the e-bike, and one on the front, one on the back, obviously. And one on the back was moving all direction. And I don't know if you've ever ridden a bike with a kid on it, even as an adult, it's difficult to hold the bike straight, especially if the kid moves. So if you have, let's say, a 13-year-old riding the bike, and a 12-year-old on the back, I mean, this is, is recipe for disaster. If there's any age limit, I would say, would be for the ability to have somebody on the bike with you, and I would say 18. You need to be an adult to have another kid on the bike with you, like you would be to drive a car. When you start driving a car, you, you have to reach a certain age before you can have other kids riding with you. Let's see. Yeah, 48 seconds ago. Yeah, reckless usage would be my number-one point. Because even if, I mean, you know when they are reckless. And you can't dispute that. But the speed, there's no way to control that. And the age, yeah, I think it's, all right, that's my thought for today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir. That is a, that was, when Ms. Chantel started speaking, that was something I thought about. The recommended age of the manufacturers, we need to look at that, maybe, to see what they recommend for an e-bike. It seems like they, they would, like a toy for a kid, say Legos. Okay, eight, eight to adult. They don't want small children with Legos swallowing Legos and choking on them. So, maybe we can check the manufacturer's suggested ages. That would be something to do, too.
I think she also makes a good point about the, yes, passengers having, you know, addressing that in some way as well, because that, to my knowledge, is not the intended use of an e-bike, to have a passenger.
Only, only if the e-bike can have, like...
Yeah, I'm sure there are some designed that way, but most are probably a single, single rider bike, so.
I think you can address that without, and I'm sorry, we're totally bogarting public comment right now.
We're going to let them...
Should we, let's wait, because I think, yeah, I agree with you.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
I tend to...
State your name for the record.
Jeff Adams. I tend to agree with the Vice Mayor. Parental, I believe in the parental input, but if we're going to allow them to make the decisions when and where, maybe we can have them put skin in the game. If the child gets caught doing something wrong, the adult gets fined. So that they have some kind of skin in the game, to where they have to be held accountable. If they allow their child to go out and ride, and it causes some kind of conflict for the city or another person, let them, let them be held responsible, or partially responsible. That way, they have a reason to be guarded in what they allow their child to do. That's just a thought.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Dance?
I'm just waiting for everybody.
We got one more. We got one more. Yes, sir.
Hi, good morning, gentlemen and ladies. Jay Wagner, Palm Coast. I just want to give a shout-out and some kudos to the attorney here, and Attorney LaMasta, and the City Council. I think that this reading was far better than the first reading. I think there's been some changes here, which are very constructive. And you might say today, I've come to praise Caesar rather than bury him. But I think some good questions have been raised here, and I think, especially for Vice Mayor Pontieri, you all got an email from me, so you know my position on this. But Councilman Miller talks about a safety issue, and age is directly related to a safety issue. There is no way. There is no way that a 13-year-old or a 12-year-old can have the maturity that a 15-year-old or a 16, and we as have as adults, and this is the issue, is to be able to predict a dangerous situation in advance. This just does not exist. There's a level of maturity that has to occur. As far as, as far as parental rights, you know, I'm a parent, I support it, but by the same token, in parental rights, some parents may think they have the right to beat their child, but they don't. Some parents may, may think that their child is, is mature and coordinated enough to drive a car at the age of 14, but we have laws against that, you know. And I agree with Councilman Sullivan, at which point do we draw the line? We either make, we either make a rule, or we have a bunch of, you know, seven and eight-year-old children driving around on e-bikes, which are inherently more dangerous, even though I support the e-bike community, without proper guidance and without proper coordination, than a regular bike. We all rode bikes. I, I rode a bike. There was no such thing as an e-bike when I was a kid. But I think this issue of parental rights, the council must set an age that creates safety. And I go back to this issue again. We do not all have, we have to abide by seatbelt laws. We have to abide by car seat rules. This concept is, is well-founded in American law and ordinances. So I understand and I respect the concern of council members, but I think you have to look at this from the safety viewpoint, and that is, at what point, try to make a judgment. We're not perfect. There's going to be errors. I'm going to take you up on your word, Councilman Miller, that, you know, this is an ongoing work in progress, and we may, we may have to come back and resolve this. But I'm thinking, as this was drafted today, was a far better situation than what we had that first week. Thank you all for the...
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Commissioner Dance?
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
Bring a prop. Safety first, that's why we're here, right? Safety of our citizens on the sidewalks, on our bicycles. This thing right here saves lives, and our adults who are out there on their, on their bikes should be wearing these at all times. I know we've already got state laws on, on children at certain ages, but we're here for safety. So, again, Honorable Mayor Norris, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor Pontieri, all council members, thank you. It's my honor to be here. Thank you for reading my comments that I sent you. Really, I would echo the comments that this first reading is, is much improved from the first. So thank you to council for the changes, and to you all for the changes that were made. Really, my comments were just targeted, just to make sure that the draft is aligned with Florida law, and that it's readable for parents, for riders, and for law enforcement, as, you know, what we draft has to be enforceable. I'm not going to go over all of the different suggestions. Again, all of the things that I, that I suggested really are to clarify the difference between what we have established as class, three classes of e-bikes, which are allowable under Florida state law to operate, and which we agree within the city can operate their pedals. They have 750 watt or under motors, and they travel under 28 miles per hour. And the majority are Class II bikes, which travel under 20 miles per hour. Those are the ones that have a throttle and have pedal assist. There's proposed legislation, I think that you're familiar with. And in that proposed legislation, there's two important parts. They talk about off-road, these off-road bicycles that do not comply with any regulation anywhere. They, there's no place in the city for them to operate safely on our public areas. So as long as we can align ourselves with that definition, which will be approved, I'm pretty confident there's going to be an approval of some new state legislation coming down the road. And this draft that I've read has that definition that we've emulated, and it's also dictated upcoming education component. So DOT, if this legislation is approved through the state, DOT will be in charge of a safety campaign for e-bike riders. So that's, that's coming down the road. I'm pretty confident that that will be put in place as well in the next session. One thing to consider with e-bikes, and the reason rarely we're here, is that they have significant differences in structure from regular bikes. They're heavier. So, a regular e-bike, due to the frame structure and the, and the motors, can be 50, 60, 70 pounds. So when you consider that difference from a regular bike, the younger driver being able to handle a heavier bike, plus the speeds that, you know, even up to 20 miles per hour that they can do, plus the distractions of devices, because they have those as well. So, there is an age somewhere where I think they're capable of handling that type of machine at a certain speed. And you lose some, and I know I'm going over, I apologize, so if you grab me. There's a little bit of difference when you're pedaling and you have that attachment to the ground versus just riding a vehicle without pedaling. And I think they lose some of that connection to the ground and their surroundings if they're just motoring without pedaling. The last thing I'll end with is, I think, in addition to this ordinance, I would love council to make a commitment to invest in connected shared-use networks as we move forward. What we're facing is a lack of that network, where we're able to have different types of mobility users on the roadways. So as we move forward, as each project is developed and comes before you, let's look at shared infrastructure, making safe paths for walkers, riders, and drivers alike. There's lots of data on that, from DOT, from other design professionals. So, let's invest in connected shared-use paths and networks as we move forward. That's the, that's the future, and we got to invest in that type of network, so thank you all.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Webb?
Mark Webb, Palm Coast. I don't ride an e-bike. I used to ride public, regular bikes. I'd like to comment this from a different standpoint. I worked for the Boeing Company for many years, and I was a technical writer on the quality side. And we were presented with challenges like this constantly. And one of the things that became a bedrock of the conversation was cost of compliance. What is the ultimate cost to Palm Coast, to the citizens in enforcement of a rule or regulations? And I'll give you an example. For years, the Boeing Company and all aerospace companies wanted to make it mandatory that you had to have your seatbelt on. Obviously, we see all the time in the news, people getting injured with air changes and getting thrown around. It's a no-brainer. The public would not tolerate a mandatory requirement to wear a seatbelt. So I come at this a different, and it's interesting that you struck the 10 mile an hour speed limit for these e-bikes, when very clearly the sheriffs in the last presentation said to you, we cannot enforce that. The bikes are too small. They don't get caught by our radar. We have no idea how fast they're going. So it was removed. Clearly, from a legal standpoint, attorneys, you realize part of the value of the law, or the effort, is enforcement. Now, for the last week, I've been going over to the Aquatic Center, and I've been watching the elementary kids at the school drive, riding their bicycles, elementary kids. We're talking six, seven, eight-year-olds, no helmets, going right by the crossing guard, right by everybody parking and going. They're not wearing helmets. Well, we know that that's a requirement. That's a law. That's a rule. They're leaving the home. Most of them have a helmet, and it's usually strapped to a handlebar or somewhere else. So I ask you to please contemplate, or ask yourselves the cost of enforcement. How are the sheriffs going to abide by this ordinance? How are we going to support the parents, like the age group and the IDs, and they're all great things. I mean, just the other day, I was on nine, I was on the highway on a motorcycle going 85 miles an hour with a passenger, no helmets. Really, no helmets, 80 miles an hour on a motorcycle. So, I appreciate what you're trying to do. You need to be cautious and patient of what your actions, and can you enforce it? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the dice. I do think that's what we need to look up, Marcus, is to, those three different classes, look up the manufacturer's recommended ages.
Well, I have a little update on that. I did a Google search while you guys were talking. So, a lot of the bikes don't have an age. So, I Googled the most popular bike that is sold in Florida, that's by Rad Bikes. It's a Rad Runner. Well, they don't have an age, but what they have are recommended height to ride the bike. So, for the riders, they say minimum of four foot 11 inches to six foot two. And then I did a Google search, what's the average height for four foot 11, and, or the age, that's all 11-year-old.
11-year-old?
Yeah, so 11-year-old, and so just under five foot, so 11-year-old that's entering middle school, so you're looking at around sixth grade. So, 11, 12-year-olds would meet possibly, I mean, there's going to be, because they're shorter and taller. But that's what it would be to get on that type of bike, is what the manufacturer recommends.
What if we did it, and we did it, so I was looking, doing some internet searches, too, and other places have age requirements for classes, for Class III, but not I and II. So maybe as kind of meeting in the middle here, because Class I and II have a maximum speed of 20 miles per hour, whereas Class III goes up to 28. So if we put an age limit on Classes I and, I'm sorry, Class III, but not I and II, or something to that effect, to try to, you know, kind of meet a medium here. I don't know how, how fast a regular bike can go. I know it can certainly go above 10, but I'm, you know, I don't know if a regular bike, you know, if it's common to go 20 miles per hour. I certainly don't want to single out an e-bike just because it goes 20 miles per hour, when we don't have an age limit for regular bikes that can go. I just don't, I don't know how fast they normally go.
So one thing, I'm sorry to add, I do like that suggestion, but also, you know, when we're talking about bicycles, a lot of the times our kids are not, when they're riding their bike, they're not in the middle of the road. These e-bikes could be in the middle of the road.
But that's a violation of different law, right?
No, no, I agree.
I don't think that we can, we can't make law based on wrongdoers who are violating other laws. Now we're just imposing on perfectly law-abiding folks' rights. I mean...
My example is just trying to compare the two. Like, one, Mr. Dance's comment, is a lot heavier, it's harder to operate than a regular bicycle. And then the other, the bicycle, I don't usually see young kids riding bikes in the middle of the street going with traffic, they're usually on the sidewalks. Obviously, there's an exception in every rule. That's all my comment was. in every rule. That's all my comment was, comparing the two, distinguishing them.
I just found out my height was stunted. Barely taller than, I'm barely taller than an 11-year-old.
Me too, Mayor.
That I said about, yeah, I said, and my wife is also the same height.
I would say that we compromise and say 11, because that's basically what you're saying is 11 is their height, and they can, they can sustain the bike, they can hold it up and operate it. So I would be willing to compromise on that age. Do you have something, Councilman Sullivan?
No, I just think it's difficult. I said that before. 11 is fine with me. I do think there has to be some age in there. And I know it creates all kinds of legal problems. But what happens if an eight-year-old runs into an 85-year-old person on the street? Would have no idea what they were doing, or what the damage was, or anything else. I just think that there has to be some, some, some age group. Middle school, to me, makes some sense.
That's 11.
Just to put this in perspective, okay? Well, and let me ask this. For an e-bike, if a maximum speed is 20 miles per hour.
28.
Well, no, for Classes I and II.
Oh, all right.
Can it go faster than 20 miles per hour? I think it can, if you're not pedaling, right? Like, if you're coasting, if you're going downhill.
Maximum assist at speed at 20 mile, I'm assuming, I don't want to guess. I don't have an e-bike.
Because regular bikes go faster than that.
Right. So with the use of the motor, the motor governs out at 20.
Right. Right. So your regular bike.
But if you pedal faster than 20, you're going faster than 20 on an e-bike.
Correct. So if you're operating it as a regular bike, an e-bike, as a regular bike, you can still go faster than 20 miles per hour. The e-bike portion is irrelevant. So why are we putting an age on, we are singling out the e-bikes. I just don't, I just don't think it's right. I think if we want to put a maximum or an age requirement on Class III, I will support that from council. But to single out e-bikes and say, you cannot be a certain age, or you have to be a certain age in order to ride these, when we know that regular bikes go faster, and I would really like to see the data from the sheriff's office. Because what are we really talking about here? From what I have gleaned from the news releases and looking at, and talking to the sheriff's office, we're talking about some teenagers that are on some of these bikes that have been altered, aftermarket, you know, alterations to them, things like that, that are being a little more dangerous. So, you know, I don't even know if we're discussing something that is posing a true safety risk that we should be overstepping.
One, can I add one more suggestion? You know, you can always say, if you want to operate that e-bike on a road, then have an age requirement. If you want to operate on a sidewalk or something like that, don't require an age requirement. That's something else you could do as well. Just trying to give you options.
On roadways, make it that age.
And I think ultimately, from an enforcement standpoint, the goal is to eliminate reckless driving, not to be pulling people over to check their speeds, or their IDs, or things like that. So, you know, necessarily, is this something that we need to regulate?
You could even, you could even go with a recommended age. Go back to where it's, where it's talking about the age.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
You know, I, again, I was with Sheriff Staley out on patrol when we saw a ton of these infractions and the reckless driving that occurred. I think this has to be addressed. And so, you know, and I think we still have some data that's owed to us from the sheriff's office. He actually committed to doing that last meeting, and we still don't have it. So, but in an effort to kind of move forward, I moved that we approve this first reading with the age of 11 of this ordinance, and we look forward to continue the conversation.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt a second, but there are some things that Commissioner Dan sent over that I think need to be amended as well, off of the age issue that I would like to discuss. So to the extent we have discussion, Mayor, I'm just letting you know, if there's a second, I would like to discuss this as well.
Okay. Anyone going to second that from Councilman Gambero?
I'll second it.
We got a second. Okay. We can continue discussion. You got, what else did you have, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so Commissioner Dan sent, I believe he sent it to all of us, a Word document. A lot of these are some technical recommendations that I think are on point. So, for instance, if we go to page three, section seven, changes electronic to electric, I think that's the industry term, should probably be amended, Marcus. The power, and I can just email this to you, so if council agrees to all of these.
I have a copy.
Oh, you have it? Okay, good. If anybody disagrees with any of these, just speak up so that Marcus doesn't make the change. But changing the power reference to an electric motor of 75, 750 watts or less, I think the way it reads, it's just less than 750 watts. It doesn't include 750 watts. There was a recommendation to add manufacturer label requirements. This probably goes to ensuring that things haven't been changed. But this is per, he has a Florida statute here referenced, so I don't have an issue with adding those requirements per Florida statute. We had the recommendation to add public school IDs for minors. I think we all agreed to that on page four. I liked this recommendation under, on page four, under section 2A, add the following to the end of the subsection. When operating on sidewalks and paths, e-bike operators shall comply with all pedestrian traffic signs and intersection signalization. This one, I think, really hits at what Ms. Chantel had mentioned. Adding more examples of reckless to include, not limited to failure to yield, failure to slow when passing pedestrians, failure to give an audible signal when passing, I think that one's really important, failure to operate with due care, and excessive speed. So I'm in agreement that that should probably Page five, section 2E, statutory language is, has been offered to add, a person propelling a bicycle upon and along a sidewalk or across a roadway, upon and along a crosswalk, shall yield the right-of-way to any pedestrian and shall give an audible signal before overtaking and passing such pedestrian. Sorry, I'm trying not to repeat myself as well. And then there was a suggestion for a local, quote, unsafe operation clause. It says, example given, failing to slow when passing, operating with due care, et cetera. So, to the extent we feel there should be any other clause that just kind of generally speaks to unsafe operation, you know, so generally saying, you know, it shall be a violation of this ordinance to operate your bicycle in an unsafe manner. I don't know if that's too broad, if that's subjective. I don't know what that could look like, but I'm sure we can probably tailor that a little bit.
That was kind of, I can't figure, I can't find it, but unsafe was kind of, I can define more unsafe in that paragraph.
Got it. So I think that was everything.
Okay, we're good with that, and we're?
Well, if we want to add those in, we would need to, to amend his motion.
Okay, so I guess my question is, is everybody okay with adding the recommendations from Commissioner Danz?
I have.
That, Vice Mayor.
Sure.
Yeah, I think I just more narrowly defined certain things. That's all.
Okay, so I'll amend the motion. I amend my motion to approve this first read of the ordinance at 11 years of age and include the recommendations as outlined by Commissioner Danz.
Continue to second.
We got a second. Should have had you all your second to begin with, but don't worry.
Yeah, I know.
So are we good? Are we good now? We're waiting for the feedback from the Sheriff's Department. We've, we've established the age at 11, and the recommendations from Commissioner Danz. So do we have any further discussion? And do I have to open this back up for public comment again? Because we were, we were massaging it.
Passengers.
Oh, passengers. Can we specifically state that?
So I think maybe as part of the definition of reckless, or examples of reckless, like having passengers in a situation where the bike is not designed to have a passenger.
Designed, yeah.
I can add that.
It's designed.
Yeah, the design is critical.
Yeah. If it's not designed for such operation.
Marcus, did you, you looked like you had something to say.
No, I was going to say, there is something that says only if the bike has it, but I can make it more defined.
Okay.
While you're lying.
Thank you.
Okay, are we good to go? Everybody happy with it now?
Call, vote.
Say again?
Vote.
Call the vote, Ms.
Vice Mayor Pontiary?
Only because I don't agree with the age, no.
Councilmember Gumbaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, we're going to do those, those changes, and we're going to move forward with the second read. We got a date on that, Marcus?
Yeah, the second reading would be the first business meeting in October.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, we're going to move on to item H resolutions. Item six, resolution 2025, approving agreement with the Flagler County Cultural Council for Administration of the Cultural Art Grant Program. Good day, Mr. Hurst.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council, James Hurst, Director of Parks and Recreation. No presentation today. We went through and made the changes that were requested last week. So under section two, items H and I, we added the TDC and the Sunshine Law that you guys had input from last week. Other than that, we're here for discussion and...
Thank you, sir. Any discussion by council or a motion? Yes, sir, go right ahead.
I just wanted to point out, on the TDC, not all the members are like elected officials. None of them are just business people who are on that group. And so we're telling, I mean, we're saying then that they couldn't, you know, they're just volunteers. They couldn't have a position in, on FC3, even though all, they're not kind of, kind of part of the governmental system. They're just business people who volunteer to be on various groups. So I agree with anybody who's an elected official, or a staff person working in the government. But I worry about restricting just normal citizens from being on committees. It would be arbitrary.
Was there a restriction in there like that? I don't?
It says, it says that TDC members can't be on...
Oh, the TDC members would be, well, should be, should, it should read TDC employees, correct? That's what it should say, not, because you are a member of the TDC Board, right?
But, Mr. Mayor, the TDC doesn't have any employees.
They don't have employee, but the people who...
The only people that are on the board.
Is on the, is on the board.
Yes.
Or if it were an employee somehow of the city or the county, you could make maybe the same kind of case. But when you're talking about just somebody who's a citizen, not otherwise part of the government, I worry about restricting what volunteer organizations they can be on.
Change it to county or city employees?
County and city employees. You have a problem with that, Marcus?
No.
That's a pen and ink change?
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
We're pretty much saying, just want to make sure, no city or county employee can be a member of FC3.
If they're on the TDC.
If they're on the TD.
No, I don't think that's...
Employees of the TDC, right?
Or if they're, that's why, sorry, redirection.
No, you're right.
I got that as saying that no city or county employees could be on the grant committee, correct?
Voting members.
Yes, so yes.
I'd say the voting members.
So grant committee, grant voting, I'll work on the word, but you pretty much want, they don't want to be in the voting process that recommends something to this council.
Yes.
All right, I can work on that. That's the direction, Nate. Thank you.
Did you have something, Councilman?
I was going to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Gambero, did you have anything?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, you can go ahead.
Make a motion to approve what the changes discussed.
Second.
Okay. We got a second. Any further discussion? We'll open it up for public comment. Any public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any further discussion? Ms. Allison, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontiary?
Yes.
Councilmember Gumbaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mayor Norris?
No.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, we're moving on to item I, the consent agenda. Does anyone have any issues? Was that one, it was pulled. Was that a resolution on the stormwater? Was that, okay, so that was...
May I ask why that was pulled?
Yes, yes, Vice Mayor. We had some interactions with local business owners related to some questions on this. And so our community development director is going to do some listening over the next week, and we're expecting to have that back on our agenda in two weeks for the night business meeting in October.
Okay, may I get consensus from staff to make sure, because I had a feeling that, Chief, that that was going to be kind of the reason this was pulled. I would like consensus from this council that if there are any changes made to the presentation as it has been presented to us today, it be done in a red line fashion. Because I have a very strong feeling that there will be some pushes to not engage in what I think are necessary increases to these fees. And if that is occurring, I would like to know about it. So I would just ask for consensus from this council to make sure any changes made to the presentation as we received it are redlined in the new presentation.
You have my consent on that.
I agree.
I agree.
Good copy. I have that direction, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So we're on the consent agenda. Anyone have any issues with the consent agenda?
I wish to move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We got a second. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Do I have to open this up for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Public comment concerning the consent agenda? No one coming forward. I'll bring it back. Ms. Allison, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontiary?
Yes.
Councilmember Gumbaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. We're moving on to public, our final public participation. Anyone have any final public comments they would like to make? Going once, going twice, sold to the man in the red hat. We'll bring it back to the dais. Discussion matters not on the agenda. Anyone have anything for the hall?
I do, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So it was very timely today that we had Pink, the Pink Army in our, in our chamber today. And I'm, again, very grateful for them being here. But this Sunday at 9:00 AM in Town Center, we have the Live Like Cameron 5K. Live Like Cameron is a local organization that raises money for children in our community with cancer. And there are 40 of them that we're aware of. I think this is a really important event. Anybody familiar with Cameron and his story and his family? Chief, I'm sure you are, because Cameron wanted to be a firefighter. Really important that we go out and show these kids we care about them, and their parents, too. So I look forward to seeing our community out there. At 9:00 AM Town Center, there is a Live Like Cameron website that you can go to. It is livelikecameron.org. Please visit the website. And anybody interested, actually, Brittany, can we do a press release on this event? I haven't seen anything. So if we can put something on our Facebook page, and let's try to show these kids and their families our support as they battle cancer. The second thing, Mayor, is, oh, we also have the intercoastal waterway cleanup, I think, this Saturday.
On Saturday.
Yeah, at 8:00 AM. We start at the community center. I'll be there picking up trash on the side of the road. So to the extent anybody wants to take pictures of their local officials picking up trash on the side of the road, here's your chance. So I encourage our community to come out. They actually give away prizes for, and I think groups actually come out and they, they collect like hundreds of pounds of garbage, which is awesome. So hope to see everybody out there. It's at 8:00 AM. It starts at the community center. And then normally, Mr. Ray Tyner would cook hot dogs for us afterwards. So I don't know who's filling that role this year, but hopefully we have somebody cooking up hot dogs. John, will that be you?
No.
No? Okay. Well, yeah, so it'll, it'll be a good time. So make sure you come out. The last thing is, you know, I was reading the meeting minutes, and it hit me, and I don't know why, as we haven't really discussed this before, but, you know, when we have a vote, it always says who votes in favor and who dissents. But when we give consensus, we don't have that information. So consensus doesn't mean unanimous. It just means majority. So I would ask for consensus from this council that if we have consensus and there's a dissenter, that the dissenters be listed. So in other words, if it's consensus unanimously, great. But if there's somebody who says, well, I'm not giving my consensus, that that be reflected in the meeting minutes. Because I don't think it's an accurate reflection of positions of persons on this council if we don't state that in the meeting minutes.
Yep. Can you make that happen, Ms. Allison? You understand? Anyone have any problem with that? Because I know we've had a couple of situations where...
We have.
We don't agree. We, you have consent, but you don't have full consent. So no one, you have any problems with that, Councilman Gambero?
None, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
I'm good with it as well.
I'm good with it as well.
No problem.
I just, I just wanted to see if we could make, no. I'd be the first one listed as not giving consent.
And that was everything, Mayor, thank you.
You got anything, Councilman Miller?
No, just, you know, the overriding theme of the Gators losing again this week is, it's becoming an issue. But, you know, I'll still be out there supporting the team, so...
Well, you're a season ticket holder, so you kind of have to...
Yeah, it's a sunk cost, isn't it?
Yes, sir. Just one thing, I know that Councilman Miller was there and did the tour of Flagler Cares. I did do the tour of Flagler Cares earlier this week. I think it's an important organization that supports lots of things going on. It's hard for the government to take care of. And so I wanted to make that recommendation to any of our other council members who haven't done that, maybe they already have. I think they have, once a month, they have a meeting like that where they encourage people to come in, get a tour of the facility, understand what they are, what they're doing. So that, I just wanted to mention that, and I know, I know, Ty, you have already done that.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's, it's great. It serves kind of as a nexus center for multiple nonprofits as well. And, you know, obviously, we have a lack of services in Flagler County for a lot of those different issues that they're serving. You know, so it's great that someone's doing that, and I do agree that it would be, I think it'd be educational for anybody to attend those.
Thank you. Councilman Gumbaro, do you have anything for the whole?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, final note from me before I pass it over to the attorney is, tomorrow night is the vigil for Charlie Kirk at the courthouse. From 7:00 to 8:00 PM, it's a candlelight vigil in honor of Charlie and his life accomplishments. Anyone in the public that wishes to participate, please come out. I think it's going to be, there's going to be a large crowd there, as far as I'm, as far as I know. City Attorney, you got anything?
Yeah, just one thing here, helping out for Ms. Johnson, in your agenda packet, there's a reporting of the emergency in sole source purchase for August of 2025. Stand by for any questions, if you have any.
Anybody have any questions concerning sole source purchasing?
I just would point out that, you know, obviously, the stormwater, the pipelining that's listed on here, you know, it's expensive, and so that goes to the point of all the investments we're making in the utilities that, you know, hopefully, upon replacing many of the pipes and things like that, in the future, we can avoid some of these costs